All right. Thank you for your patience and welcome to our July 15th Regular Board of Education meeting. We have a roll call, please.
Samantha Bradford.
Here.
Barry Oldshooter.
Here.
Leah Collis Bellizari.
Here.
Erin Chanding. Steve Wang.
Here.
Diana Clapton.
Here.
Parathi Shree Vaswakova.
Here.
All right, would you please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you again for your patience as we've gotten a little bit of a late start here. Let's see. I guess we're gonna go right into my report.
Yeah.
Wow, that's not usual. First time I don't have a tough act to follow, I guess. So, thank you all and welcome to the new faces we have on our panel here. So, thank you for being here this evening and welcome. I'm looking forward to our discussion this evening to understand how our instructional minutes are empowering personal excellence in every learner. We do have a lighter agenda this evening, but Board, please be prepared for a heavier agenda in August, as I mentioned before, so be ready for that. And thank you to the Board for addressing all the due to polls that we have had out there. We've got our schedule now for PTO President's Council and Equity set for the coming school year. If you're not able to attend, just a reminder, let us know so we can make sure that somebody can fill in. And stay tuned for the remaining committee polls. As many are aware, District 220 Board Member Erin Chanding has declared her intent to run for State Representative of the 52nd District, and it's within Erin's rights to do so. And Erin is aware of the Board policies and the laws that are in place. We have consulted with our council to confirm that merely running for an office, for a political office, while refraining from engaging in any prohibited political activity while acting as a Board member or on school district property does not constitute a violation of the Board's Code of Conduct. Erin and all Board members are aware of the policies that the Board does have in place. That being said, the goal of this Board is to focus on Framework 220 and the daily work of the school board. Therefore, I will be working with you guys, the Board, in the coming weeks prior to our next Board meeting in August to assign other Board members to the following committee assignments that Erin holds currently: Policy Committee, EdRed Representative, and Legislative Committee. So if you're interested in those, please let me know, but we will be making those changes before the next, before those meetings. And a reminder to the Board, we have the New Teacher Luncheon coming up on August 6th, so please plan to attend that if you're able. And the place to be this week, I guess I'm gonna have a new ending to my report here, is just to enjoy the summertime here in Barrington. So with that, that concludes my report. And next up is Public Comment. We do have a few people signed up for Public Comment. So, I'll remind everyone that we've now come to the portion of our meeting we set aside for Public Comment. The Board values your thoughts and your comments and opinions, and we ensure that all voices are respected and heard in accordance with the Board Equity Statement that states that we recognize, embrace, and defend the identities, abilities, and voices of our diverse school community. The Board has agreed to the rules set forward in the policy in which the public commenters have agreed to abide. Rules will be enforced as needed. This is a Board meeting that occurs in public. It is not a public meeting. Public comment is not a conversation. It does not necessarily reflect the views of the Board. If any comments require further attention, we ask that Dr. Winkelman follow up and report back to the Board. So with that, Kevin Harris, I wanted to ask if you would like to speak first?
Yeah, please.
Okay. This is an undocumented rule that we have if some other office, state office wants to, state or local office wants to speak, and they're here, they can go first.
Thank you so much. Well, thank you guys so much for letting me speak today. My name's Kevin Harris, and I was VHS alum, so I'm really excited to be back. I work at State Representative Martin McLaughlin's office, your current 52nd District State Rep. And I'm here tonight as a civil servant, providing information for you to share with your residents. Representative McLaughlin asked that I attend tonight's meeting to let you guys know that our local office is open and available to serve you and your constituents. Our address is 28662 West Northwest Highway in Lake Barrington. It's right across from, right north from Kelsey Roadhouse. The office can assist your constituents with various State of Illinois departments with such items such as state unemployment benefits, FOID card, CCL card applications, licensing issues with the Department of Professional Regulation, Secretary of State issues, Department of Insurance issues, and others. We are also going door-to-door, visiting businesses and homes in our district's communities, providing up-to-date phone numbers and websites so that our residents can access the state services that they are entitled to. So we are having a number of community events during the coming months, including on Saturday, September 6th, we will hold our popular prescription drug drop-off and shred event at the office on Northwest Highway. And then on Wednesday, October 15th, we will host a mobile DMV event, and that's at the Barrington Village Hall. And please bring forward to our office any issues of concern to your community so that we may address them and prepare for any items for discussion at the veto session, which is usually in October. And finally, Representative McLaughlin is available to participate in any community events or town halls. Just contact the office for scheduling. And thank you guys again for the opportunity to speak this evening. I'm supposed to be leaving you guys brochures that we're handing out. We are completely out, and we're getting more on Thursday. So I'll probably be back sometime in the next couple of weeks and bring you guys some. But yeah, that's about it. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Kevin. Deanna Stern.
Okay. Good evening, Dr. Winkelman, members of District 220 School Board, and to the community members either in this room or listening at home. My name is Deanna Stern, and I come here today as a proud parent of four children in the district, a former special education teacher, and most recently, a candidate for 220 School Board. When I ran for School Board, I did so with every intention to just serve on the School Board and give back to my community because I honestly cared about the future of our students, the success and development of our school district, and the character of the future citizens that 220 is producing. Nothing more, no ulterior motive, or with a thought to use this position as a stepping stone to achieve other political partisan roles in the future. Why am I bringing this all up? It has come to the community's attention that School Board Member Erin Chanding, who ran nonpartisan for her second term as School Board Member, has announced she is currently running, which you stated, for a partisan 52nd State Representative role in the state of Illinois. I've had dozens of people reach out to me questioning this action and feeling betrayed that Mrs. Ding is in direct conflict of interest with her current position as nonpartisan School Board Member. In addition, I'm not sure if our community even knows that our school district doesn't even allow student volunteer hours from a political organization. When I made the decision to run for a seat on 220 School Board, I had to sign a statement of economic interest, basically stating that I was not entering into this role with the intent of gaining some type of benefit elsewhere, whether it be financial or otherwise. This obviously would raise pause for concern of initial intent. Then I come to understand that there are two other codes of conduct that were instituted by Barrington 220 School Board itself. I will read these now. "I will represent all school district constituents honestly and equally and refuse to surrender my responsibilities to special interests or partisan political groups. I will avoid any conflict of interest or the appearance of impropriety which could result from my position and shall not use my Board of Education membership for personal gain or publicity. I come here today asking 220 School Board Members to answer this very question: Is our School Board Member Erin Chanding in conflict of interest in regards to her current Board seat and future partisan campaign efforts? I also must point out that there were two other School Board Members at her campaign announcement, which I believe Board Policy states that there shall never be three School Board Members in a public gathering as they could be discussing business without a quorum." Thank you very much.
Thank you. Liann Chang.
Good evening. My name's Liann Chang. I am the Secretary of BCIC, Barrington Chinese Immersion Council. I'm going to speak on behalf of us tonight. I just wanted to take a quick moment to acknowledge and thank you guys for the opportunity to engage in ongoing dialogue. We're looking forward to the upcoming meeting that we have set up. I think it's on Monday. And, let's see. We believe that this will be a positive step towards strengthening our communication and mutual understanding. We recognize that there have been some concerns in the past, and we truly hope that this meeting will help bridge the gaps and move us all forward together in a constructive way. We will continue to work on recruiting for this year as well as next year. We hope that this can also be seen from the district so we can get those numbers up and get us back into where we have been. And then, yes, just thank you again for your time and your dedication from the district towards our language programs.
Thank you, Audrey. Hector.
Excuse me. Hi, Mia.
Oh, I'm sorry, Audrey. Sorry.
That's okay.
Hi. Good evening, Dr. Winkelman and all Board of Members. My name is Audrey Ortega, and I'm here today as both a parent and advocate of the integrity of the Chinese immersion program in District 220. I want to begin by thanking you for continued support of the language program. And however, I respectfully urge you to reconsider the recent decision to reduce kindergarten and first grade into single section of 26 students. While 26 might be a standard class size, Chinese is not a standard subject. Mandarin is a tonal language with character-based writing system, completely different from English where kids are used to the alphabetical that have been exposed to since they are taught abroad. And our youngest learner are not just acquiring a new language, and most would agree with me that Chinese is one of the most difficult languages to learn. For most family, Mandarin is not enforced at home. The classroom is their only immersive environment. So comparing the class size of the CI students to normal class general education is not an apples-to-apples comparison. Furthermore, Barrington 220 policy guidelines recommend 21 to 23 class size. This proposal cohort exceeds that guideline and that policy. The justification of having a higher class size is due to attrition to reduce the class size is speculative and frankly, disheartening. It is assuming failure rather than planning for success of our students. Meanwhile, our children who wanted to join the program are placed on waitlist, limiting access and opportunity. Given the complexity of this language, the class size should be below the guideline. Not only is justifiable, but it is advisable. Second, the proposed model asks for one teacher to loop between two grades. While looping can offer continuity for the students, it doubles the teacher's planning responsibility to curricula, to set of assessment, to distinct development needs for different grades. These students need attention and emotional support for our younger learners. The teacher managing up to 52 students across two grades cannot provide the same attention and individualized instruction, no matter how dedicated our teachers are. Even with additional assistance, the core instructions and the relationship building with the kids fall on the lead teacher. So let's reconsider them and also consider the message that this sends to widely our educators. We are asking us teachers to do more with less, especially on a short notice. At the time when teachers burn out and shortage of national teachers on the hotline, we should be providing support.
Thank you, Audrey.
Yeah.
Hector, is it Ortega? Ortega?
Yes. Okay, just to finish the thought, my wife said we should be encouraging teachers to come join the district rather than shying them away. Okay. My name is Hector Ortega. Thank you for the Board members for this time. I'm a parent of a student in the CI program. I'm here to express deep concern about the proposed consolidation of the program from those from two sections into one. This program has been a cornerstone of academic excellence in our district. Actually, when we made the decision to move to the district, that was the main reason, moving into the district. Research from the Thomas and Collier 2017 shows that students in dual-language programs not only achieving bilingualism and bilingual literacy, but also are performed their non-bilingual peers in reading and math by middle school. These are not just language benefits, they are academic accelerators. And for those who are interested, I have a QR code here for that research. It's free for you guys to take a look at it, because you cannot just distribute it. But here it is. I'll leave it this for you guys. Reducing the program to one section increases class sizes from 16 to 18 to 26 students. That's a 44% increase in class size, which directly impacts instructional quality, especially in a program that relies on a small group in the interaction and language immersion, hence CI immersion. I understand the need of fiscal responsibility, but this is Barrington 220, one of the most well-resourced districts in the state. Cutting a program that prepares globally competent bilingual students to save on staffing costs sends a wrong message about our priorities. What's more concerning is the lack of transparency around enrollment. If new families weren't adequately informed or encouraged to apply, the low enrollment is a reflection of outreach, not interest. Before making irreversible cuts, I urge the Board to share enrollment and outreach data publicly, pause the consolidation for one year, and launch a community engagement effort to assess true demand. This program is a long-term investment in our children and our district's reputation unless that is mentally based on a short-term numbers. Thank you for the time and commitment to our students.
Thank you, Hector. Soren, Sony? And Isaiah, did you guys want to talk together? Or you want to talk?
Okay.
Please introduce yourself.
Okay. My name is Soren Sony. I go to Stacey and Campus.
My name is Zaf Fefra. I go to Stacey and Campus too. We're both 7th graders.
Okay. Salate, which means hello all in Latin. Recently, the decision was made to cancel Latin in the middle schools due to low interest in resignation of a magister, which means teacher. We strongly believe that Latin should continue in middle and high school. We would like to be able to continue Latin next year as 7th grade students. Okay. Latin is the most unique classes I've ever taken. For starters, it gave me a deeper understanding of its history-related culture and related culture. Due to this, it gave me idea of the way Roman citizens started and acted in ancient times. I love how it connected us to Roman mythology and literature, undoubtedly making history more interesting and willing for children. If Latin is discontinued, you will feel uneasy and out of place learning an unfamiliar language, especially with students who have already taken that different language for a year. What makes Latin stand out uniquely is the fact that it's taught alongside sign language. This makes Latin worth keeping as it is not like any other language since not only does it teach speaking, but it comes with the added bonus of sign language, which has the benefit of an extended branch of communicativity and inclusiveness for children who have sight deafness or cerebral palsy, which is a disability that one in 345 children are born with. This is actually the most common mobility disability and happens typically near birth. Stopping Latin will mean the value of sign language and speaking wasted and gone. The decision of cutting Latin felt like the time and effort we put in working hard and learning Latin was unnoticed and disregarded during the decision. The cutting of Latin from the language courses made it feel like the time and effort we put into learning was way ahead. I understand that it is difficult to find another Latin teacher with just over a month until mid-August when school starts, but I hope this letter will help you realize that Latin is no ordinary class, but a language that has brought joy in the middle schools despite being over 2,000 years old. In conclusion, with our former teacher, Magister/Mister Fleck moving away, hope parents in Stacey will continue keeping Latin classes alive. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. Abby Neaton? Neton?
Hello, everyone. My name's Abby Neaton, and I'm a 2025 VHS graduate. I've been in the Barrington Chinese Immersion Program since kindergarten, and I've been learning Chinese for 13 years now. I've received this Illinois sealed bilingual literacy for Chinese on my diploma. My story started with our Barrington District 220 Speech Tournament. I was presented with the option to perform a Chinese speech instead of an English one by my Chinese teacher, and I took it. I won first place, twice. This is what originally got me into Chinese memorization of speeches. Through these opportunities and the fact that my teachers were able to coach with me one-on-one, I was able to improve my vocabulary and accent immensely. I loved learning another language, and I only earned more awards in middle school. While it took a lot of work having to actually sit down and memorize paragraphs in Chinese at home, it is because of the time and patience of my K-5 teachers that I remained motivated in my Chinese efforts. I truly do not believe I would have continued pushing myself in middle and high school if my teachers didn't have the time to work with me one-on-one, where they both encouraged and pushed me to meet my goals every time without fail. So what? What now? Well, I won the National Chinese Speech Contest in my freshman year of high school, going up against people almost four years older than me. I flew to Beijing and took classes at Beijing Normal University for two weeks, completely free of charge. The US Department of State also has a prestigious travel scholarship for high schoolers who are learning critical languages, which includes Mandarin Chinese, which allows for students to travel to a host country that speaks the language they're learning in order to live with a host family and attend language classes at a university for free. 13,000 students apply for this scholarship every year. In a 2.25% chance, I've received this scholarship for Mandarin Chinese not once, but twice by the US Department of State. I even plan on living and working in Taiwan in the future. This program was my whole childhood, and being someone with no Chinese-speaking relatives whatsoever, I relied on my teachers heavily for help, one-on-one help. By cutting kindergarten classes and limiting the class to one teacher, not only is it going to be harder on our teachers, but it will also be harder on our students to learn a second language. And if these changes happen to other grades as well, how are our teachers going to manage a large classroom of kids like that by themselves? What teacher is going to want to stay in this district and teach Chinese at the elementary level with this kind of workload? Parents also rely on these teachers to be able to assist students one-on-one and answer questions because half the parents themselves can't speak Chinese. I never had anyone to go to at home to help me with my work. My parents just told me to go figure it out on my own. Less classes also equals less students learning Chinese, which means even less students are going to have all the opportunities and chances that my classmates and I had growing up. I'm now a student ambassador from America to both China and Taiwan because of this exact program. For these reasons, I urge District 220 and the Board of Education to keep the current Chinese immersion classroom learning model. Speaking from experience, you never know which child is going to walk into that classroom and be positively impacted for the rest of their lives. Thank you.
Jennifer Dreyer?
Good evening. My name is Jennifer Dreyer, and I'm a parent of a rising first-grade student in the Chinese immersion program. I'm here today to express my deep concern in the choice to slash the kindergarten and first-grade Chinese immersion program from two to only one section this upcoming school year. First, I'd like to commend everyone who supported my daughter in her kindergarten year, both directly and indirectly, including the Board and district leadership. My daughter had an incredible kindergarten year, and she was both challenged and supported by her teachers and school staff. Unfortunately, her class size will more than double this school year. This takes away the individualized support that she and her peers have been receiving this past year. As a parent, I cannot help but be disappointed by this decision. Young learners need confidence and are more willing to take risks in smaller, more supportive environments. Making class sizes twice as large will make it significantly more difficult for teachers to differentiate instruction and for students to engage in the language and content at the same level. These changes target the students, who will be most negatively impacted by such a shift, our youngest learners, who are still building foundational academic and social-emotional skills, all with the added load of learning an entirely new language. I myself am an educator and know how adding just a few additional students to a class roster can significantly impact the learning experience for both students and teachers. Doubling class sizes regardless of the program will certainly detriment teachers, families, and students. Beyond this immediate impact on students and teachers, this decision sets a poor precedent for the future of CI programming within our district, as well as all other special programs. The willingness to drastically increase class sizes and significantly reduce this program has been received by CI families as a lack of commitment from the district. Families who have deeply invested in Chinese immersion now feel uncertain about the district's dedication to its success. CI families have trusted that the district would continue to support a program that has brought academic strength, cultural richness, and community pride. Instead, the message being sent with this divestment is that immersion is expendable. I urge you to reflect on the long-term ripple effects of this decision. As the trusted stewards of their education are students, who are the ones that are most directly impacted in these most formative years, deserve stability and well-considered decision-making that upholds their best interests and maintains the highest standard. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Vanessa Choi?
Good evening. Thank you for having me. I'm a parent of an incoming first grader from the CI program. And first of all, I want to thank the Board for listening and responding to our earlier request or concern to keep separate Mandarin and English teachers. It's a big relief for me personally. But I'm here today to really voice my concerns over the upcoming change in the structure of the CI program. We moved to Barrington just for this program, and if there was a waitlist where my daughter had joined kindergarten, we probably wouldn't have taken the chance. And a year before kindergarten, we did a lot of research on different Mandarin immersion programs, both private schools, public schools, and out-of-state as well. And we compared different teaching models, we compared the stability, and many other factors. And, you know, we determined that Barrington had the best program for our family. And our expectations were exceeded in kindergarten. My daughter actually attended preschool in the Chinese immersion program for two and a half years in the city. And at the end of that program, when she was five years old, the only thing she could say in Mandarin was "Wǒ yào bīng qī lín", which translates to "I want ice cream". And, you know, that when we went to kindergarten, the first thing the teacher told us was, "Don't worry, she's going to be speaking Mandarin at the end of this school year." And true enough, at the end of this year, she was speaking, she could write a few words, she could even read a story, so we were so happy. And, you know, while I understand that the district faced logistical challenges with enrollment, I'm really concerned that this solution will compromise the quality of the program. My primary concern is really, you know, the burden on the teachers, as many of our other parents had mentioned, will really impact the quality of education for them. Asking one teacher to do two grade levels of five- and six-year-olds who have vastly different developmental milestones, it really doesn't matter if you put two teachers and two assistant teachers, you know, in the classroom. You know, they really have to really understand each individual learner and how they learn and remember them. 50 kids, you have to remember each of them and develop individualized lessons for them. I think it's too much a burden for our teachers. Just imagine having them prepare and attend 50 different parents' teacher conferences. That's way too much. And this solution honestly feels like... And this solution honestly feels like a Band-Aid solution to solve logistical problems. And my questions to you are, why do you want to do this to our youngest learners? And why now? Why not think about it and do it next year or in the coming years? So I ask you to reconsider this plan and give us a chance to collaborate with you on a solution that will, that will, you know, that our children will deserve. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Tracy Mylawfer, and I speak as a mother of two children directly impacted by the proposal to split our teachers' days between kindergarten and first grade in CI. We have been repeatedly reassured that this is a world-class education using a looping model, but tonight I want to shine a light on how this is, in reality, an untested experiment, not a recognized or validated educational model. This proposal requires my children's teachers to teach core subjects for two grade levels in a single day across fifty-two students. This is not the looping model. According to EBSCO's Research Starters 2021, looping is when a teacher stays with the same singular group of students for more than one year, differentiating it from multi-age or split-grade models. It does not include teaching an additional grade simultaneously. So what about the multi-age or split-grade model? Well, Veeman's nineteen ninety-five review defines this as students from different grades learning together in the same classroom with benefits only when students are taught as one group, not when a teacher divides time between separate classes. This proposed approach is neither true looping, since teachers are not staying with a single group, nor a multi-age model, as students are not learning together in one classroom. Instead, it is a hybrid that combines elements of both without delivering the proven benefits of either. So let me be clear. There is no research-supported model in which a teacher splits their day between two separate grade-level classrooms with two curriculums. I have looked for it. What will happen is this. Our children will have less individual time and support with their teachers and fewer meaningful interactions in both languages. The teachers, meanwhile, will face a Herculean workload, planning and delivering instruction for two different grades every day. This is not sustainable, and it would harm both student outcomes and teacher morale. I did not move here for this program just in time for both my children to be used as guinea pigs for an untested approach with unknown consequences. I appreciate the board's commitment to high standards, which is why I believe it's important to rely on proven models, models backed by research and years of successful implementation. All of our children deserve an education grounded in research and proven best practices. Barrington deserves a world-class education, and this is not it. If this proposal is being considered primarily for enrollment logistics, I urge the board to please weigh those needs against adopting an untested approach with potential negative outcomes. Please bring back the evidence-based model that has served our community so well for the past fourteen years, at least until a program review can be made. And finally, I ask, would you want this for your children? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Annie Shum. I'm the mother of an incoming kindergartner, Nolan. I'm here to speak to each board member about the decisions you have recently made that directly compromises the quality of education my child and his fellow classmates will receive. I'm referring to the hastily decided structural changes from two-teacher-to-classroom approach in the Chinese immersion program to the current teacher-sharing model with the first grade, um, with the first grade, effectively removing the Mandarin-only classroom, loading the class size to be the largest across programs in the district, enforcing teachers to teach two grades, two curriculums, in an already academically challenging program. First of all, I would like you to understand that this is a structural change to the program, not a routine staffing change, as this board once alluded to. Two-teacher-to-classroom model is proven to be the most effective model to foster bilingualism. Students who have gone through this program have praised the physical reinforcement to speak Mandarin-only when they enter the classroom. By removing that, young children such as mine will experience more challenges in their learning journey. This type of decisions should not be made based on one year of low enrollment, especially as the board has presented in the past, when low enrollment is across all programs. I would like to share with you some of my findings after hours of research. There is a groups, um, a big group of families who have meticulously put together all the Chinese immersion programs across the entire country. I've combed through the entire spreadsheet. I focused on these schools that are all in the Midwest. There are thirteen Mandarin immersion programs in public schools across Midwest, twelve states. And guess how many of them use a two-teacher, one-classroom approach? None. All of them are two-teacher, two-classroom, or they have a full immersion program. We're not here today asking you to convert it to a full immersion, but what's really clear here is that the program here at Barrington two-twenty is not progressing, it's regressing. Now, it is possible that their website is outdated, that maybe they have switched to a one-classroom approach, but what's really clear is that two-classroom, two-teacher model is the goal standard. On the school district website, it states Barrington two-twenty is known for its innovative curriculum, rich history, and sense of community. This structural change does not reflect that. I urge the board to reconsider the decision and return the program to two-teacher, two-classroom. This reflects the true innovation and the community-centered education that you so preach. Thank you.
Thank you. So before we move on, I know, Dr. Winkleman, you're gonna have a bit of an update on Chinese immersion in your report. Maybe you could just touch on the guidelines, was one of the comments that was made?
Yep.
Um, and, and then let us know the progress as we continue to have the discussions with those families. That'd be great. And then I just want to touch on, I'm just gonna repeat what I had said earlier, um, that regarding Aaron Chanding running for um state representative. We did consult with our council, and we did confirm that merely running for political office, again, while refraining from engaging in any prohibited political activity while acting as a board member or on school district property, does not constitute a violation of the board's code of conduct. Um, but I would like to remind the board, right, that we do have policies that are in place, and we should be very careful to make sure that we do not violate the open meetings act. So, thank you for that. And with that, um, next up is your report, Dr. Winkleman. So I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. All right, for my report this evening, um, I'd like to start with, I've, at each of our, each of our board meetings, um, I try as much as possible to incorporate many updates about our students. A little more challenging this summer, when students are not in session and activities are not occurring. Um, but I did want to highlight, um, this evening, um, our students did recently participate in the Special Olympics Summer Games, which were held at Illinois State University this summer, um, June twentieth through the twenty-second. Um, our athletes competed on Saturday, June twenty-first, in events such as the hundred-meter run, tennis ball throw, softball throw, mini javelin, and many others. Um, our student athletes earned various medals in the different categories, and as you can see on the slide, um, uh, very fun and enjoyable event, uh, for our student athletes. And I don't know if any of them are here tonight, but if we could give them a round of applause, that would be great. All right, for my next slide, um, you know, during the summer months, I've mentioned this at the last several meetings that we've had, um, even though schools, um, you know, are on vacation, uh, a lot of the work ramps up, ramps up actually for us at the district office. So, uh, we continue to carefully monitor enrollment throughout the school district, um, as some families may move out of the district and as we welcome new families, um, into the school district. At this time, our enrollment remains stable across, uh, the levels. I would like to point out one area at the elementary level, and of course, you do have your, your chart, and it is large-scale for you this evening, since last time it was the smaller version, of course. Um, we do have some sections, if I could draw your attention, uh, at the second-grade level at certain schools. Um, and, uh, these sections are, um, currently enrolled at class sizes above, uh, the guidelines for the school district. And in addition, uh, the fully-registered students reflected in numbers, if you look to the column just next to the actual numbers, it, it does state, we also have some families in what we call the pre-registration stage, um, and others that are in the inquiry stage of registration at those schools that are already, uh, with fully-registered students, uh, that those classes are above our, are slightly above our guidelines. And, and so therefore, uh, we are recommending a classroom assistant, uh, be assigned, uh, to the schools to support, uh, these classrooms, where we do, uh, have, uh, those sections with students that are over guidelines. Um, of course, we will continue to review all of our sections on a weekly basis over the next five to six weeks, uh, as we approach the start of the new school year. And in between, uh, this meeting and our next meeting on August nineteenth, I will certainly keep the board informed, uh, in my reports if any other areas emerge or require additional staffing. All right, so, um, I do have a, an update on Chinese immersion. Um, you know, Sandra, you'd asked me to comment on guidelines. You know, we do have guidelines, uh, for our different, um, levels throughout the district. Um, we also do have guidelines specifically for our language programs, uh, that are twenty-four to twenty-six students. Um, what we are proposing, uh, for next year, uh, with the Chinese immersion sections is that upper end of that range at twenty-six. So, along with monitoring the overall enrollment, um, of the entire district over the past couple of months, uh, we have been considering adjustments with our Chinese immersion program. Um, as the board is, is fully aware, we presently have lower enrollment than we have experienced in the past, uh, in our kindergarten and first-grade, uh, sections. I do want to remind the board that in the past, uh, you know, we had a, a student here tonight that participated and went all the way through that program, right? Well, we have, we, we have educated students in sections of, of twenty-four to twenty-six students, uh, successfully. Um, and so I do, I do want to comment on that, that while the sections currently, the past several years, not just one year, but, uh, actually for five years straight, uh, have had lower enrollment i- in the CI program, um, we did try to carefully listen, uh, to our parents and our staff over the last several weeks, and we ultimately decided upon a recommendation to run one section, um, but retaining the instructional delivery model, uh, that has been in place since the start of the program, with instruction being provided by native-speaking language role models in both English and Mandarin. Um, we did recently communicate, I want the board to be aware, that these adjustments, uh, first with our teaching staff, have identified ways to support our staff and make sure they, uh, receive the support, professional development, and resources that, that, that they would need. Um, as we approach the upcoming school year, uh, we held meetings with all of our parents, uh, that could attend. We sent information out to the entire CI community and the council as well. So, we're really trying to honor our commitment to transparent and ongoing communication. As was alluded, there are continuing meetings, one planned even for next week, to make sure that we're keeping, um, in touch and responsive and answering questions that may emerge. Um, we also recently updated our website. So if you navigate to, um, our teaching and learning site on our website, we do have updates as far as the presentation that was actually shared, uh, with the parents, uh, that were able to attend that meeting. Um, and in addition, we have started an FAQ, uh, that, uh, anyone can click on and look at. And as we receive parent, you know, parent questions, some of the things that came up tonight, I will work with our staff to continue to update and provide information on questions or concerns that might emerge, so that, uh, again, we're trying to honor, you know, an ongoing, uh, conversation, uh, with our community. Uh, the next slide, you know, in addition to that, I think it's important, and, and we certainly, as a school district, have a rich history, um, and commitment to continuous improvement. Uh, we have started discussions, uh, with the parents, uh, and, uh, the Chinese immersion council to look for opportunities to improve. Um, and, and this type of, uh, partnership that, that I'm speaking to, you know, some of the things that have been identified of really deepening our communication and collaboration, uh, you know, making sure that we have more frequent and ongoing communication between key staff members, um, and BCIC, um, refining messages and our outreach strategy. These are other areas where, you know, I, I think, you know, again, with some of the comments tonight about, you know, w- what is the root cause of this, you know, uh, lower enrollment that we're seeing right now, um, being able to continue that work, I think it's going to be important in identifying ways that we may, um, adjust and improve, um, our messaging and outreach strategy. And certainly, we want to look for ways to, uh, celebrate and share the, the CI student experience, uh, as a school district. So, um, we continue to promote and, um, celebrate, uh, what we have accomplished. I think to kind of end my, you know, comments tonight, but certainly this is something that myself and our whole staff is fully engaged in, um, and will continue to do over the summer months, is, you know, some of the questions that have come up, you know, when we had those twenty-four student sections, we were, as I mentioned, that have occurred in the past, uh, we were able to provide the support for those sections. Um, right now, we're experiencing some lower enrollment. I'm hoping that the efforts that I just stated through this, we may, uh, see improvements and realize, uh, larger sections again. And this is a, this is what we're planning for twenty-five, twenty-six. And I really want to, you know, reiterate that for the board and the community, that we're making that decision for this cohort. We are certainly, um, eager to look for ways to make improvements and fully prepared to, uh, offer two sections, um, if those efforts and if we see higher enrollment. So this is how we're making adjustments, just like we do for all of the sections across the district. Uh, every year, there's an opportunity for us to add sections and reduce sections in order for us, uh, to find the right combination, uh, to meet our, our student needs. So I just want to re- reiterate and reassure the board we're committed to that. Um, and then to conclude my report, um, I want, I'd like to share some highlights of some key dates, because it's July, and we're not going to get to, back together again as, as a board until, uh, really right before the start of the school year. But, um, as you can see, uh, several important, uh, dates to consider as we, uh, look forward to August and the return to school. So, starting on August sixth, uh, there will be a welcome-back information that will go out, uh, from the district. And then on August seventh, our elementary-specific welcome-back and student schedule information will be released to families. The next day, August eighth, we'll have middle school and high school welcome-back letters, and student schedule information will be released. And then, the, the following week, on August thirteenth, we'll do a district-wide, uh, emergency notification test. Um, in the past, our district has, uh, traditionally waited till, or just before that cold inclement weather. Um, we're gonna actually start that process a little bit early and actually do our first test before the start of school, so we can identify if, uh, we have any, any families that we don't have all of the right information in our records, so we can immediately, uh, correct that even, uh, before the start of school and then continue that process. We'll still probably do another update before the, the cold, you know, weather descends upon us, but, um, we're gonna start that process a little bit earlier. And again, that's directly tied to commitments that I stated in, on behalf of our staff, to, to identify ways that we can make improvements, uh, with our communication, uh, process and, and measures. So, lots of things coming up. We got a couple more weeks before that calendar turns to August. And then, you know, that's historically when people's minds start to shift, uh, from summer vacation back to, uh, the start of school. And that concludes my report.
Awesome.
Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Oh, can I make one more comment, too? Um, I really want to thank the, the, you know, students that spoke tonight.
Yes.
And, um, I, you know, it's not a dialogue with the board, but I, I will follow up, and I, I will, I will reach out to the seventh graders that, that spoke tonight, and, and we'll make sure that they have outstanding questions, that we work on that, too. I did make myself a note, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
They did an excellent job.
Yep.
Thank you for being here.
Okay, now that really concludes my report.
All right, um, informational reports. Does any board member have any questions or comments about the informational reports? Okay. Uh, board committee reports. I know Finance met today.
Hmm.
Any other committee, I guess, want to give us a report?
Uh, sure. Uh, so, so Diana, Barry, and I attended Finance today, and, uh, we had a, we had a quick conversation with respect to our twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six ten- with respect to our 2025, 2026 tentative budget. The, in short, it provides surplus of about 1.5, excuse me, 1.49 million. And with this comes about a 3.2% increase in our budgeted revenues and about a 1.8% increase in our budgeted expenses. There were a couple of updates that, you know, modified how we were doing things as it relates to our, our bottom line, and those were largely attributed to intensive support assistance as well as transportation reimbursements. And so the plan is, now that it's been presented to us, we will go through a full presentation on, at the next board meeting on the 19th. So I guess I'll just say on behalf of the Finance Committee, thanks to Ms. Lager and her team for putting this together, it's, it does demonstrate good fiscal responsibility. We are taking down our, I want to kind of clump this, but like our supplies, capital outlay, purchase services. It's going to, it's going to appear to be flat, but, and while it is going up a little bit, it is, it is a very positive step to be able to see minimal increases with the inflation that we've seen. So I want to just give kudos to the team for being able to budget that way. And then even more so to the rest of the group for having to follow the budget. But I don't know if anybody has any questions, but Diana, Barry, I don't know if you guys have any comments you want to share.
That's great. Great summary.
I just want to share one. Like, there's two members that are on Finance, it's yourself and Diana.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to call that out.
Remember, I just want to remind everybody, you should not be participating, you should just be observing.
Well, actually, it's a, well, actually, it's a, it's considered an open meeting, though, right? So everybody can attend.
It is an open meeting, anybody can attend, but we have to be careful not to have three board members in conversation.
I'm sorry. Thank you for clarifying.
So just reminding you that. I don't know, I wasn't there, so I'm sure that's what happened, but.
Yeah, it was fine.
Since you brought up that three were there, I just wanted to make sure that everybody knows.
Yeah, yeah, no, sorry for that.
No, that's okay.
Well, that's true for any board meeting, any committee.
Any board committee, right.
Any board committee, sorry.
Um, yeah. So good, so you'll, I think you guys will be very interested to see the deck. It is about 50 pages, though, so good luck.
Well, work.
Yes, one more can do.
Thank you for, for helping us to be prepared when we read through it. All right, anything else?
We transformed to 20 met right after our June board meeting, so it was about a month ago. And, and the theme was accessibility, and it's just so impressive how our, our building partners, the architect and the, and the design team are really taking this very seriously and are really committed to making sure that we are doing better than just code, that we're, you know, we're really trying to make this, the addition specifically of the auditorium, but also the rest of the 2020 work for all students. Additional ramps, elevators, as people know, if you've walked through the high school, there's so many additions and there's so many different levels, and they're taking pains not to have stairs, but to ramp down very gradually so that people can get from level to level and, and make it look seamless. So I'm just, I'm just impressed with all the hard work. And I also want to just kind of do a short shout-out to Joy Wagner, who's been consulting. And, you know, it's just been great to get her input, and she's also very impressed with what's happening. So, I mean, I think she's a hard woman to impress, and, you know, if she likes what we're doing, I feel good about what we're doing. So I just wanted to share that.
That's true. Thanks to Joyce.
Well, and not only just being accessible, but being like the big example of accessible in, in all the, all the theaters they've ever done. They're like, the architects are like, yeah, we're going to get this, we're going to like be the best. So it was super fun and exciting. So, yeah. And I'm looking out the window at things on the roof, is that solar?
Yeah.
Chris?
Cool. All right, I saw it, and I'm like, I'm thinking, a little off topic, sorry. But it's exciting.
All right. And the other committee reports? Just real quick, can you, somebody remind me when the next policy meeting is? Is it before the next board meeting?
Our resident expert is not here this evening, we're going to look it up.
Well, if you could just let me know, I just want to make sure that we.
It is not, August 26th.
Okay, just to make sure that we have our new committee assignments done before that. So, thank you. All right. Are we ready for the consent agenda? Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
All right. On the consent agenda this evening, our board minutes from June 17th, both opened and closed, and there was a revision to the open, so please take a look, make sure you took a look at those. And finance reports, we've got the board wage report for, for June, the treasurer's report for June, revenues and expenditures for June, and the July bill list. We have a revised personnel report. And we have the, okay, and the surplus property memo from last month. Any questions or comments on those things? All right, let's do a roll call.
Sandra Bradford.
Yes.
Leah Colister-Lazari.
Yes.
Diana Clapton.
Yes.
Steve Wang.
Yes.
Harathi Srivastava.
Yes.
Barry Altshuler.
Yes.
All right, motion passes. We have a couple of action items. The first one being, do we have a motion to approve the second reading of, of board policies that we reviewed the last meeting?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have, I didn't count them, 20, I think it was 24, something like that, policies that, that are second reading. There's a few of them that we had follow-up on.
Can you get me tonight? I'm going to channel my former.
Okay. I brought my notes.
Several years of presenting policy, you know, our policy guru, Dr. Byrne, couldn't be here tonight, so hopefully I don't let her down. But yes, there is a long list of policies that we reviewed, each one at the, at the last meeting. We did get some direction from the board to look at two in particular. So 2:260 Uniform Grievance Procedure, we did have conversation about adding the language back in for parent notification. So if you look at 2:260, you will see that that is highlighted in blue. So if you look at the one that says with edits on the third page of that document, that light blue highlight, we did add that same language back in, which is consistent with policy 7180. So the, the second reading will include that language. And then the other policy that we looked at was 2:265, the Title IX Grievance Procedure policy. If you take a look at that one, there was some question around defining touching, right? And so we did consult with our attorneys, and if you click on policy 2:265, second reading with edits, you will see that we have modified that to define touching of a sexual nature. To be clear, that it's not just any type of touching that may occur, obviously with 9,000 students approximately in the district, they may bump into each other during the day at certain points. And so we really wanted to make sure that it was clear that, based on the board's feedback, that we, you know, put a little bit more explanation and definition to that. So those were the two that I had on my list from Dr. Byrne to make sure I provided an update on tonight.
There was one other that I know you've already provided an update to the board, but the community wouldn't have heard it, and that is the 7190, where we are simply, we talk about the secret society, I'm trying to find it here.
Yes.
But that is by statute.
Correct.
So I just wanted to make sure that everybody heard that there was a follow-up on that one as well.
Yep, that was in the weekly.
Yep.
Thank you for the reminder. And so that policy reflected that one as well.
Does the board want me to read through all the policies that we're going to, that would potentially be approved? I'm happy to do so, just, I'm just going to get a drink before I do it.
A water.
Okay, so the policies, those are the ones that, that we had further discussion on last week that, that Dr. Winkelman just went through and made those modifications that were just described. The rest of them stayed the same as they were presented at their last board meeting. They are policies 2, 260 Uniform Grievance Procedure, policy 2, 265 Title IX Grievance Procedure, policy 415 Identity Protection, policy 480 Accounting and Audits, 510 Equal Opportunity Employment and Minority Recruitment, 520 Workplace Harassment Prohibited, 535 Compliance with Fair Labor Standards Act, 5:100 Staff Development Program, 5:120 Employee Ethics Code of Professional Conduct in Conflict of Interest, 5:200 Terms and Conditions of Employment and Dismissal, 6:80 Teaching About Controversial Issues, 6:150 Home and Hospital Inspection, 6:235 Access to Electronic Networks, 7:10 Equal Educational Opportunities, 7: oh, gosh, I just, 7:20 Harassment of Students Prohibited, 7:60 Residence, 7:70 Attendency and Truance, 7:180 Prevention of and Response to Bullying, Intimidation and Harassment, 7:185 Teen Dating Violence Prohibited Access to Electronic Networks, 7:190 Student Behavior, 7:200 Suspension Procedures, 7:210 Expulsion Procedures, 7:250 Student Support Services, 7:255 Students Who Are Parents Expectant Parents or Victims of Domestic or Sexual Violence, 7:270 Administering Medicines to Students, 7:310 Restrictions on Publications Elementary and Middle Schools, and 7:315 Restrictions on Publications High Schools. Did I miss any?
Nice job.
Well done.
All right, so with that, let's do a roll call.
I think I might have to call everyone's name at least four or five times. Barry Altshuler.
Yes.
Leah Colister-Lazari.
Yes, 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 yes.
Thank you. No problem.
Harathi Srivastava.
Yes.
Sandra Bradford.
Yes.
Steve Wang.
Yes.
Diana Clapton.
Yes.
All right, motion passes, and look for those policies to be updated on our website. Next, we have a motion to approve the Sunny Hill Elementary School Improvement Plan.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Dr. Winkelman, did you want to give a quick?
Yes, so.
Perhaps others are coming to give us a quick update.
Yeah, so the board received a memo, part of the designated, you know, targeted school designation that Sunny Hill School received is a requirement to have a submitted school improvement plan by July 31st. And so the board has that memo attachment, but I thought it might be helpful if Zach and Josh come up and provide a little bit more information beyond what maybe you read and an opportunity to maybe clarify any questions that the board, the board may have. So no, it's not, this is not a formal presentation of those slides, but just an opportunity to, to address the school improvement plan for Sunny Hill.
I guess I won't show my slides then. Sunny Hill received a targeted designation on the 2023 school report card. And as a result of that, the school is now in their first year of implementation of the school improvement plan. It is a four-year cycle, first year being a planning year. This is the first year of the implementation of the school improvement plan. This is an improvement cycle which is designed to enhance school achievement through system level changes and data-informed practices. Sunny Hill submitted its initial school improvement plan for the 2025, 2026 school year using the ISBE-provided template. The plan was informed by the sample elementary school improvement plan and reflects a thoughtful and collaborative and aligned approach. Most importantly, the school improvement plan is closely aligned with our, with the school's vision cycle, which reinforces consistency and coherence.
So as part of that plan, I can, I wanted to lead with, our school improvement framework, the vision cycle exceeds a lot of the state expectations already. So a lot of these processes and deadlines are part of what we already do across all of our schools in Barrington 220. And so for this school year, Sunny Hill has really outlined three very specific goals, one in the area of math, one in the area of reading, and then one in the realm of SEL. And in order to determine kind of the data that we were using, we used as the baseline data, the data for both reading and math from that 22, 23, or that 23, 24 school year as the baseline, and we are using data from this past school year, 24, 25, to set the goal. So for baseline, we used 23, 24, and that target data will be based from our previous school year, from last school year of 24, 25. Each of those goals will have a very specific action plan with very detailed and well-articulated action steps that will be measurable. And what you did notice when you saw that sample or that template and the Sunny Hill School Improvement Plan is that you saw TBD at some of those check-ins and progress monitoring points. That's very natural at the point that we are at in the school year with it being middle of summer. That will become more specific and that will be filled in as we get closer to the school year, identify those metrics. The benchmarking and moving forward will have very specific data to report on based on the action steps that we're taking. Okay? Ultimately, this plan will allow for us to be very responsive to student need, ground the plan and the goals in data to enact action among the Sunny Hill staff. And I will say, I've been part of those meetings, Principal Bradburn and the Sunny Hill staff have already been meeting throughout the summer, working very hard to be prepared for this upcoming school year. We saw Great Gains last school year, which we'll be touching on in the fall in our data presentations, to talk about some of the growth that was made even last school year, which was technically a planning year, but we still, we didn't wait to get going on that work. You know, we did a lot, a multitude of things. So that's kind of an overview of goals and action plan as well.
The Sunny Hill plan, just to emphasize what Dr. Ernst was saying, that we didn't wait, this plan really capitalizes on the work that was done last year, but also continues the momentum that has been established at Sunny Hill. It is enhanced by the additional support from ISBE. So this plan, the target designation does come with additional support from, from the State Board of Education. And also to emphasize what Dr. Ernst was mentioning, the team has really worked very diligently in order to, A, create this plan, and I will also say that this plan isn't drawn out of, out of thin air. There is a, during the planning year, there is a full needs assessments, a needs assessment that is completed by, by the staff, and that helps to inform the areas of greatest need. So you see there's three goals in there, those three goals really come out of the greatest need at the school, math, reading and SEL. So we commend the Sunny Hill team, which is led by Tony Bradburn for developing a data-driven, student-centered plan that will continue to be aligned to our vision cycle. We will certainly continue to monitor progress, advocate for needed resources, and of course, we'll continue to celebrate successes. So that concludes our, our overview. You do have a memo, and you do have the actual plan in, in your, in your notes.
So when, when we got an update a while ago about how Sunny Hill was doing, it looked like K through third was really improving and fourth and fifth not as much. Is something to help that in the plan and those fifth graders going to sixth grade, is there something to help them along if they're behind their peers from other schools?
Yes, obviously, we could provide a lot more context in, in a follow-up, but the short answer would be, one of the key action steps this year is going to be leveraging co-teaching across all of the grade levels and maximizing resources to really get down to individual student needs across all grade levels. And really with the addition of, of those resources that we added last year with your support, we were able to start really implementing systems and structures, not just across those foundational early elementary grades and the primary grades, but all the way throughout. And we have been articulating very, kind of distinctly with the middle schools, about where students coming out of fifth grade are at, what kind of supports they will need in, in sixth grade. And so that has been conversation going on between Sunny Hill and Station and Prairie for that specific cohort of students.
Give kudos for all the hard work that's put into this already, and I'm excited to see how fast we can meet our goals. Could you just comment on the specific? Could you just comment on the specific numbers? Because you said we didn't just grab them out of thin air. For math, we're aiming, I think robustly, to go from 38th percentile to the 68th percentile. And then in reading, we're going from 40th to 52nd. So why do we have a bigger reach, if you will, with math than with reading? Are we not expecting as much? Or, I mean, how did we come up with the numbers?
You're stealing some of the thunder from the fall data presentation.
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
That's one of those huge star moments. So it is large, but remember, we're using the baseline data not from last school year, but the year that we were deemed targeted. And so as of last school year, in the spring, 64% of students met those benchmarks. And that shows how much growth we made. And remember, what was the targeted area of focus last year? It was math.
Right.
So why we exhibited that huge amount of growth? It was the area that was the main focus in the start of this plan. And so we saw considerable momentum. And so that's a huge credit to, again, Principal Bradburn and the Sunny Hill staff. So yeah, that does, when you first look at it, like, holy cow, how are you going to increase that much? That's based on the growth that was just made in that one year's time. Obviously, we are adding an explicit literacy goal in as well this year as a focus with, and so we are basing all of that off of the most recent data and using that targeted identification year as the baseline to kind of show the progress and growth over time. Does that make sense?
So we're going to be targeting maybe more reading? Maybe next year, we can expect that number to expand out?
And that would be the hope, right? Is where we continue to see some of that momentum and some of those core instructional practices can flow over into both instructional areas, a lot of the pedagogical content that works.
I appreciate you sharing the background.
Yeah.
I just saw numbers, and I wasn't sure where this came from.
You have to act just as surprised and celebrated.
Yeah. I will be, I will be, I promise.
Fireworks on the slide.
Yep, yep, yep.
Sunny Hill staff will be here in a few minutes.
Yeah, of course, yes, yep.
Yeah, so please thank Principal Bradburn and the staff for their efforts.
Yeah.
I know he couldn't be here this evening. I know he wanted to be here, but...
Yeah, it truly is. It's very impressive how really the entire Sunny Hill staff has really rallied around this plan and really working collaboratively together. And I also want to thank Dr. Carpenter and Dr. Ernst, who have made quite a concerted effort to make sure that we're keyed in and regularly participating and supporting all of these efforts. Of course, it's hard to capture everything that's going on on a weekly and even daily basis at Sunny Hill in these memos, but it's been very impressive to really see that entire school community come together and really be thoughtful and intentional with how, and of course, then you get those gains.
Yeah, phenomenal.
And I just want to add, we do plan on adding in, and I talked with Mr. Bradburn today, about kind of building some of that, understanding that data literacy around our one-way immersion and the dual-language model we really have functioning there, and how we tell that data story, right? And what are realistic expectations for students that are learning, you know, in a native Spanish language to begin their schooling career and transition into English throughout? So more to come, a lot more to come, but this is kind of that initial planning stage, and you're getting to peel back the curtain on kind of what it looks like very early on. And then it'll become more robust when you see those really in-depth plans in April, when you go, whoa, there's so much here, and we've had some of those previous years.
I had two just maybe out of curiosity questions. So the plan looks great. I think this, I love the detail that you guys have in here. And I know some of it, we had to, but I think it's really great just to see some of the, like, SMART goals we use as incorporate. So I'm like, I love them, they're measurable, quantifiable. I was curious, and this is, again, a curiosity question, is, do we pull through some of that for, like, your vision cycle planning for other schools as well? Where it's like, quantitatively, we'd like to be here by the end of, you know, I don't know if it's not as specific because they're not targeted schools, but do we pull some of that through to some of the other schools as well as we're thinking about measurement?
You'll definitely be able to see evidence of that throughout all of our schools this year, reflected in the vision cycle plans. So measurable and quantifiable, you know, in different content areas. SEL measurement looks a little bit different.
It's different, yeah.
We talked about that last year, literacy and math potentially, or content areas. But definitely, you'll be able to see that throughout plans this year.
Awesome. And then you'd mentioned ISBE gives some supports for targeted schools. I was just curious what that looks like.
It is, within the planning year, is $10,000 in the planning year. And then in the subsequent years for the implementation, it goes from $20,000 to $15,000 to $10,000. Did I get that right?
Yeah.
That's great. I wasn't even thinking financial support. I was thinking, you know, other, that's great.
And they do give consultative support. And there are other supports. We have a representative from ISBE who works directly, is a principal representative, who Mr. Bradburn has access to and can work with when questions arise.
That's great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you, thank you.
Nice job.
The board does need to take action to agree upon these three goals that we're just elaborated upon, so thank you so much. So could we do a roll call, please?
Steve Wang?
Yes.
Sandra Bradford?
Yes.
Harathi Srivastava?
Yes.
Diana Clapton?
Yes.
Barry Altshuler?
Yes.
Leah Colister-Lazari?
Yes.
All right, motion passes. That concludes our action items for this evening. So next up is our discussion item. You want to introduce it?
I will, yes. So earlier this spring, there were some questions posed around instructional minutes and our calendar, and in particular, when we were having conversations about potentially adjusting our school calendar, not for this upcoming school year, but that following year in '26, '27, the board gave some direction to the administration to come back with some information on these two topics and tried to do so in an organized manner. I really want to, you know, thank the team for taking the last, you know, couple of months, several weeks, you know, really reaching out, compiling, and putting the information together in a way for, I think, the board to digest. Dr. Byrne was part of that work, but, you know, as I mentioned earlier, was not able to join us tonight, but certainly Chelsea was involved in those meetings as well. So, you know, this is our way of trying to put the information we gathered into a presentation format for the board and the community to kind of answer some of those questions that emerged.
Thank you.
All right, so as Dr. Winkelman noted, we wanted to make sure to show Barrington's current instructional minutes and calendar structures, and then how they might compare to some of our surrounding districts. You know, as Sandra, you noted earlier, we want to make sure that we center that mission statement of empowering personal excellence for every learner. And we try very hard to think about that in all the various ways that we work, you know, throughout the district. But certainly, we think about that when we are talking about how we structure the calendar and those instructional times. Also, with our strategic priorities, you know, those decisions are made with those priorities in mind. You know, we have a lot of different structures that look at our calendar and our instructional minutes, from Calendar Committee to Labor Management Committee. And then we also have our unions, both BEA and BSEO, that are important partners for us to make sure that we're kind of looking at all angles to not only provide our students with appropriate time within the classroom, but also our adult learners, our instructors, to have the professional development time to really understand the content that we expect them to deliver to our students. We thought it was important to share, you know, that ISBE Illinois has a lot of mandates when it comes to a variety of different things. But first is our mandated training. So there's a lot of different areas that we're required to deliver to our staff. Every single year, they have changed through school code how often staff have to learn these different varieties of topics, from some being annual, others to being every two or three years, and some being on five-year cycles. But as you can see, there's many, which is why we need to make sure that we're thoughtful and mindful about that time and learning that we provide our staff for those purposes. And then also our mandated units of study. So we also have a number of areas that we have to be thoughtful about when it comes to those core subject areas and making sure that we have scheduling thought through so that they have appropriate professional development time to learn that instructional content. We thought it might be helpful to provide you with some information about the different types of calendar days that ISBE allows for us to utilize when we're thoughtfully putting together what our calendar proposals are that come to you, usually in that, like, January time. So first off, there is institute days, and there are in-service days. A lot of these, a lot of times, those days are used interchangeably. We like hear that language. But they are viewed a little bit differently by ISBE. So first off, institute days, our student non-attendance days, as you expect, often utilized for district professional development, school improvement planning, et cetera. They do count towards the total 185 days that are required for a school district in Illinois, and that's total. So that's both student attendance days as well as additional days that are required. In-service days, in contrast, are also student non-attendance days. However, there's specified mandated PD that can be a part of in-service days. And you can count one of those days as a student attendance day towards those 176 days that are mandated by ISBE for students. Barrington does currently use one of those days in our calendar. And lastly, there's full-day parent-teacher conferences. So also, students are not in attendance during these days. Two can be counted as student attendance towards that 176 required days again, and Barrington utilizes one of those. So in total, Barrington uses two different days that are counted towards student attendance while there are not students physically in the building. Next, we have some partial day options that ISBE allows for us to utilize. The first is a school improvement half day. So students do attend for a half day. Afternoon is, you know, with the staff in a variety of PD opportunities, but specifically focused on school improvement. Those do count towards student attendance days. And they can be utilized as often as you have access, like instructional minutes over the required number by ISBE. So ISBE requires you to have five instructional hours of instruction during a typical day. So anything in, you know, over that amount can be banked essentially over time. And then every time you have a certain amount of time, you can then utilize a half day. Half-day parent-teacher conferences. Obviously, students also attend in the morning. And then afternoon, evening are parent-teacher conferences, as you have experienced before. Those also count towards student attendance days. And then lastly, we utilize early release Wednesdays. That's the weekly 30-minute early release for teacher collaboration, PD, et cetera. That is only utilized for our pre-K through 8th grade. Our high school does not utilize early release Wednesdays. However, those are not coded separately when it comes to the calendar that we submit to ISBE because we are still in excess of the amount of required hours for instruction. So those aren't coded differently. However, we do utilize that, and it's different than our typical day. So should be noted. Okay, so you're going to note that we have Barrington at the top of each of the following slides, but we put together information to share for other area districts that are also unit districts. In our BEA contract, we have a number of districts that are noted as our comparables. So the expectation is when we are looking at a variety of different things, when we're looking to make changes or to inform decisions, that we use our comparable districts. We chose to go with unit districts because they're unique, right? Like, we have every level of learning, and that poses different challenges and different unique opportunities for us. So in order to do our best at comparing, you know, quote-unquote, apples-to-apples, I think important for us to be looking at our area unit districts. So that's what you see here. As you can note, each of these districts, including ourselves, has 176 student attendance days noted on their ISBE-approved calendar. That is, we made sure when we were looking at all of this data to check it in a number of different ways, from looking at their ISBE-approved calendar to utilizing their website to understand their specific schedule for each of their individual levels, looking at all the different types of days that I laid out earlier of what they utilize. And then also touching base with other HR and teaching and learning colleagues in those various districts to check our work and make sure that we're providing you accurate information. It was important for us to have an accurate picture because if we want to really consider where we are with our peers, that it needs to be as accurate as we can to the best of our ability. So all the same number of student attendance days. That next column shows you whether or not those districts are currently utilizing those in-service or full parent-teacher conference options to count towards those 176 required days where students may not actually be in attendance. So you can see that we're a little bit all over the map of where those unit districts decide to either use them or to not use them.
Can you just, so Lake Zurich, do they not use them? Or was it not available to find out whether they use them?
They do not use them.
Oh, okay.
They're currently not using them, yep. Next up, so we discovered as we were looking at all of the data that every district uses a variety of different options when it comes to looking at their calendar. So three of the big highlights were early release, like we do. Now, I noted next to ours that we're doing an early release of 30 minutes weekly, whereas like if you look down at Lake Zurich, they don't do it as often, but they do an early release that's in greater length than us. And then we have a number of districts that are utilizing a late start option. And then a few, both us and then Neboville are utilizing SIP half-days. So as you can see, it's kind of, again, all over the board as how each district decides to structure their calendar and how they utilize those days. But I thought it would be wise to share kind of where everyone is at with utilization.
What's SIP mean, sorry?
Yes, please, what?
SIP?
Sorry, SIP, so School Improvement Plan.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So many acronyms.
Yeah, right, there is. All right, so next up is comparables when it comes to each of our levels, when it comes to instructional minutes. So what we put up there is annually, ISBE requires those five-clock-hour instructional time per day, which totals to 880, or 300 minutes per day. 880 annually required. So that's the five times 176. You will see, this is for elementary of each of the districts. So what that means is we pulled out the timing for lunch and for recess from each of the districts. We were careful to try to note exactly how much time each of those districts uses for each of that because it can be different. You know, there's requirements when it comes to, you know, labor law, and there's requirements for contractual purposes, and then there's requirements through mandates for, like, recess for elementary. But sometimes, they do more, you know, than what's required of them. So we made sure to double-check that work. So you'll see, you know, the hours for each of our districts we're comparing. Next, you'll see that with middle school, same concept. So same number of hours required. And then you'll see the various districts. So this removes lunch, this removes recess if they had that component, and then passing periods. So we were also very careful to look at various districts. Some of them had multiple different schedules depending on the different type of day that they were running. And sometimes, those passing period timings changed. And so we made sure that we had those calculations correct when we were doing our total instructional hour component. And then finally, we have high school. So again, 880 required annually. So you see the variety. Same concept as that secondary level of middle school. Lunch is taken out of that, as well as passing periods. So as you know, there are some students at the high school level that do eight straight, as they call it. You know, they don't take lunch during the day. We were assuming, and we did this for each of the districts, that we assume that each student is taking a lunch. So that we were, again, comparing equally between the different districts. And finally, I just wanted to note that we have added the ISBE-approved calendar on our website for '25-'26. It's been approved by ISBE and is up and available to anyone that would like to see it. Any questions?
Thank you for putting this together.
Thank you for putting this together.
No problem.
Quick question. If I, I don't know if this was part of the study, but there's a lot of chatter about e-learning when this came up before. Do we know, do most districts have e-learning for snow days?
I don't know if we've studied exactly which districts have an approved e-learning plan or not. But even if they have an e-learning plan, it's still a local decision of whether you're using it as an e-learning day, you're still sending kids to school that day, or you may just call an old-fashioned snow day. Again, just to remind the board, you know, we have an e-learning plan. We have a new e-learning plan that is going to go into effect this school year with new parameters. But I still, you know, per policy, have the ability to call an old-fashioned snow day or emergency day based on the conditions, you know, that exist. I'll give you, for instance, two years ago, some of the districts just south of us, so not very far, but Arlington Heights Palatine, I was on calls with those districts as we were experiencing that winter weather pattern. We were able to actually maintain our electricity grid and they were not. So even if they wanted to do e-learning, they lost power and that took the ability away. So there's so much variety on those days. It's very hard to do a comparison across the districts. But I do want to remind, you know, the board that we did make a commitment that as we implement our first year of the new plan around e-learning, because this was a question that did emerge in our community, that we would come back and do another study about, you know, how did the new e-learning plan go in its first year, look for opportunities to make adjustments based on that feedback. So that is in our plan for this year as far as administratively, continuing to look at that and look for different opportunities to improve.
Well, and a lot of times it's been very handy to have. A lot of opportunities that we would have missed. So thank you for all this work. And Melissa, thank you too.
Yeah. And I appreciate that question, Leah. That was one of the ones I was going to ask as well. Sorry, I have a nitpicky question.
No, please.
I'm just curious because I, so looking at the comparables, those are four of them, or actually all four of them are the unit districts from our BEA contract. Did Dundee just not have good data available? Is that why we excluded them?
It's a good question. So we started with including that district. However, we wanted to make sure that we had, as close as we could, similar-sized districts, similar demographics. And we wanted to make sure that it didn't, you know, alter kind of the picture we were giving you. We wanted it to be very accurate comparables to a lot of the districts that some of our community members have also highlighted, that they're interested in seeing comparables too. So we just didn't want to add in any additional confusion when it came to that, but...
So they're just different enough, is what you're saying?
Yeah.
Okay. Fair enough.
Yeah.
When we say 176, 176 days, that's including the four half-days, right?
Yes.
Or is it 100? Okay.
Yep.
And then, so you did give us that on that e-learning. So I really appreciated the section on professional learning. Did you guys by chance look at how much professional learning other districts provide too?
You know, based on what you saw with, you know, early release, late start and SIP, I assume that that is what those districts are utilizing that for. However, we didn't calculate like number of hours that you're spending in professional learning versus another. We focused on the instructional time.
Sure. I was just curious because I do feel like it would be a, well, a good selling point if we could just share like we do more, right? Okay. And then I think the only other thing that was here was, when I look at the number of hours, we're pretty comparable elementary-wise. Middle school, I think, we're the second lowest. And then high school, we're kind of like in the middle there. I'm just curious, has there ever been discussion regarding, you know, could, is there, and I know it's contractual, but like, is there any appetite from the district standpoint to maybe add some time back for instructional work in it, like outside of, you know, what we already have?
I mean, I don't want to speak for you, Dr. Winkelman, but I think, you know, I think all of those considerations are always on the table. We want to be thoughtful about how we utilize our time and we utilize what we have available to us per the contract with staff. So we want to just be, you know, thoughtful about weighing those two sides because they're both really important and they both obviously make an impact on students, you know, both being there, learning, but also their instructors being more and more, you know, content experts by learning more and more and learning. And it's not just about learning content, but it's learning about different strategies and what approaches work really well with their diverse learners that are within their classrooms. So I think, you know, we're trying to always be mindful about weighing those two things. But yeah, I think we're always open to those conversations.
Yeah. And I don't want it to get lost, but we are, you know, again, big thank you because this isn't just, this isn't just data for the, I mean, they verified it. I mean, and a lot of, you know, effort went into making sure that we really had the right information that presented tonight. But I don't want it to get lost. One of the other things we talked about at that same time was also really looking at, with our school improvement days, those half-days, looking for opportunities within our community to see if we could identify some childcare on those days. Do you remember that? That kind of, that emerged as something in the, it was kind of more in the qualitative data that we received. Our team has continued to be meeting in the background and identifying and considering ways that we might be able to, you know, activate and engage our PTOs to have student activities, you know, planned for this year that coincide with those days, you know, engaging with park districts and so forth to try to see if we can create some programming. So I just don't want that to get lost. Like, we really looked at everything. We listened carefully to the direction from, you know, the board and areas that emerged in the survey. And so there will be more updates around those topics as well in addition to the report tonight.
That's fantastic.
Yeah.
You reminded me too that in the 2026, 2027 school year, we're changing those early release days to be in the middle of the week.
Correct. We changed that at the same time that we looked at the week of Thanksgiving.
Yes. It was half-day SIP. Yeah. Early release. Yeah. You've got it.
Good reminder too that the staff is listening and making adjustments.
I just had, maybe it's bonus questions, maybe it's building off of Steve a little bit. I was curious for some of the PD, is it all live or is it, or is it some of it like virtual kind of professional development?
Depends on what kind of PD you're looking at. So we have a really thoughtful team that works really hard, you know, months in advance of planning every year and theming our professional development, but also providing lots of different opportunities depending on what needs kind of arise each year. We also have those mandated trainings that I mentioned at the front end. We recently partnered with ELN, which is a newer component that is supported by IPA, Illinois Principals Association, as well as ISB as a platform to utilize for mandated training purposes. So we recently moved to them. We've been with them for a year and we'll be continuing on with that process. That is virtual, virtually accessible, I guess I should say. Certainly, there's always opportunity for collaboration and discussion around those trainings, but certainly those are accessible to our staff. And our plan is to be mindful about when we send those out to staff this year. Was actually something that came up in discussion with a staff member recently, that, you know, they'd love to have those accessible for those that want to start a little bit early this year, earlier than that start date because, you know, they're all trying to manage all the different things that they need to do in preparation for the year. And sometimes those are helpful things to have access to. But, but yeah, it's a bit of a variety.
Yeah. I think it's, this is really great information and it's great to see kind of where we stack versus some of our comparables. One that always sticks out of my mind is like, well, what does Stevenson do? I'm really curious what their hours and I'm not, I'm not asking for work, but it is in my head.
Thank you for clarifying.
It is in my head. And then the other thing that's in my head that was kind of weird, I appreciated you laying out just the different types of days because, I don't know, it feels weird that there's non-attendance days that count as attendance days, you know? It just, I know it's allowed, it just feels odd to me. And it's not a question, it's just, it's interesting.
Sure. Yeah. It's definitely been an eye-opening experience just learning so much about, you know, what ISB allows for calendar nuances. There's a lot of rules. There's a lot of things to look at. But I think they provide all these options for a good reason because every district's needs are different. And I think it provides us a little bit of flexibility to be creative with how we implement all the different requirements because there are a ton of requirements, as we kind of looked at at the beginning, of different, you know, units of study and then also that learning for staff. So, you know, I think they provide us some opportunities to be creative.
I just had one thing, kind of to piggyback off of. Steve had some good questions and that's what I was going to ask. But regarding the early release, late start, I just noticed that we kind of are one of the only districts that do the 30-minute early release and then have the SIP days. So do you know what these other schools do? Like, when do they do their PD? Why do we have so many and they have so few? Someone like Lake Zurich, who only does the four two-hour days.
I'm going to ask Chelsea not to answer that question very intentionally. And here's why. We're not avoiding the question. I don't want you to suppose about what's going on in different districts or what their conditions are. I also want to be very mindful of, you know, that dynamics are so different from district to district that I think that would be very challenging to really dig into why districts choose something for their community. So... No, I know what you mean. Because there's also the, you know, we're talking about other districts. We did have a thought tonight of, do we list the districts' names or do we just kind of do District A, B, and C? We felt like it would be better for us to be more transparent with it. But I am cautious of just how deep we go in these conversations when we're talking about other districts. And I don't want Chelsea to be put in a position where she's speculating or not, you know, representing correctly. Just if I can just ask for that one, we can look into. But I'd be cautious to start to talk about other school districts tonight.
We wouldn't want them talking about us.
Correct. Correct.
Totally. I think that's a thoughtful thing, you know, but I think a good question too. But I think, you know, what was very evident to me throughout, like digging through all of this, is that every district's doing it definitely in their own way. But I think that all of those districts we listed are very successful districts and doing great things for kids, you know? And I think even though we varied how we approached that, that we're all having success with kids too. So, you know, however it's done, it seems to be good.
Yeah. And to add on to what Chelsea said, you know, she learned some things. I'm hearing that I think our board and our administration learned some things through this process. And as we start to approach those future calendars, you know, I think we've hit the mark in our community of trying to be a couple of years out. You know, that's, we're doing that every year. So as we get into this school year and we're meeting with the BEA and BSEO and really thinking about the next calendar, I'm picking up on some things also of like, hey, maybe we need to ask a few more questions about how we use some of these days, which I think is what you were kind of alluding to. And maybe where you were going, Harathi, with that question, that maybe as we start to think about the 27, 28 calendar, we really look a little bit more closely at the days and do they count? And do we want to continue with that process? Do we want to consider some changes in our district from this vantage point? In addition to the, oh my gosh, those conversations are so rich. Like, where those days land, sometimes it's like, you know, it's, you got to really have the discussions, understand it from, and that's, there's representatives from the different levels. Because how a high school teacher may want that calendar to look based on their needs is totally different in certain ways from how a middle school teacher would approach it, from an elementary teacher that's like, hey, our records time is here. I would really like to have these days available, but that doesn't always align fully. So we'll still do all those different, you know, conversations that exist. But can I just get kind of some thoughts from the board as far as, you know, when we approached this year and we're looking at the calendar, is there some interest for us to use the data that we collected and have some conversations around the different days?
Yeah.
Yeah, for sure. Okay. So then we will act on that as we get into these meetings and start to think about our calendar and building it for that next school year.
That's great. Thank you.
Yeah, of course.
Thanks so much.
Yeah, thank you so much.
And a good opportunity too, as we have our new communications director to make sure we're telling the community what's happening on some of these early days too.
Absolutely. Duly noted.
All right. So that is our only, that was our last discussion item. So the board does need to go back into closed session and will not be taking any further action or having any further discussions in open session. So we are, will be heading back into closed. Thank you all for being here.